Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Pulis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Brandy Eber.
Here.
Greg Strike and Andre Spinelli are excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. First item on the agenda are the minutes from July 11th, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve? Or rather, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Eber, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Any objection? Seeing none, that motion passes. Next item are disclosures. Commissioner Eber?
I'm going to disclose.
Commissioner Pulis?
I do have a disclosure. I was absent from the last meeting and will abstain from voting on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Pulis. Commissioner Winchester?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes, I do have a few items to disclose, just mostly for the public's knowledge, mostly in the matter of case 2022-0082. First, I'd like to disclose that my roommate was the navigation center, the navigation team manager at the Sullivan Arena when it was operated by Beans Cafe. And secondly, I would also like to disclose that I believe the board chair of my nonprofit organization was the past president of the University Area Community Council, and I think may, I think has a comment or two through the university community council in the packet that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Krishna. I guess with those, we'll go ahead and, and I guess I'll ask if you anticipate that that would influence your ability to decide this case in one way or the other?
I do not.
Okay. From the commission, is there a motion to direct her to proceed?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ron is their second. Commissioner, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Ron, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, taking Commissioner Krishna's final comments about her ability to participate, not influenced by the disclosures. Thank you, Commissioner Krishna, for letting us know, but I intend to support my motion.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and call a vote. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Krishna. Commissioner Ron, any disclosures?
No disclosures.
And no disclosures for myself. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We've got three resolutions for approval. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Eber. Second by Commissioner Winchester. Any objection? Seeing none, that motion passes. And that brings us to our public hearing items. We have two this evening. Before we begin, I'll go ahead and read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes. Individuals receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questioned by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. The first case on our agenda is case 2022-0084. Is there a presentation from staff?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. So Grayling Land Development is seeking site plan approval for a nursing facility on an undeveloped tract of land located in baseball subdivision, tract A2B, fragment lot 2. So this proposal is Phase 2 of the Maple Springs campus. The site plan shows 132,000, approximately 312 square foot building. That will include skilled nursing, rehabilitation services, and hospice care. This is a nursing facility used in the B3 district, which is normally permitted by right. However, the special limitations of the zoning require a public hearing site plan review with Planning and Zoning Commission prior to the issuance of a building permit. For agency comments, the private development division requests conditions of approval related to the building of the private street. That's just constructing the segment of the road from Succu Way to C Street with the same structural and typical section as already existing. The traffic department requests the new pedestrian connections will need to be extended as a not dead end at the next phase of development. Traffic department also asks for construction drawings to show snow storage, calks, grading, and traffic control devices, lighting plan for parking areas, and loading berths. For approval criteria 2103-180F, the site plan is consistent with previously approved subjugate plan development master plan and land use plan approval. It meets the AO 97-150AA requirements. Condition two, staff finds that it has been met. The nursing facilities are permitted use in the B3 district. Nursing facilities shall comply with the medical facility accessible parking requirements. That has been met. At least 10% is the requirement. And Phase 2 requires 37 parking spaces and seven accessible parking spaces, which are provided. 2105-040A3, use-specific standards for nursing facility. Access, that standard's been met. The site is accessed from the proposed new road to C Street. Minimum lot size, standard's been met. Vegetated open space, the standard may be met. 15% of the lot requires 18,928 square feet of vegetated open space. Staff has made a condition of approval to show a table or graphic that they're meeting the vegetation open space requirement. Parking and setbacks, the standard's met. Ambulance and delivery areas is met, and snow storage may be met. Commercial tracts are allowed to share parking, landscaping, and snow storage, and staff has made a condition of approval just to show the snow storage areas or the calculations. Table 2106-020A, dimensional standards. That standard's been met. The required setbacks for the property brownies of the underlying tract have been met. 2107-030B, private open space. Private open space equal to 5% of the gross floor area has been met. The landscape site plan shows 7,360 square feet of private open space just within the courtyard. Drainage, stormwater treatment, erosion control, and discharges. The drainage plan will be reviewed by Building Safety Division with the application of the building permit. 2107-060, transportation connectivity, the standard has been partially met. There's a sidewalk connecting the main entrance to the building to the parking lot, but it doesn't appear to connect to the budding primary street frontage as required by onsite pedestrian walkways. Traffic engineering has requested the commission approval to provide the temporary full conditions out to the street. 2107-080, site perimeter landscaping. L1 site perimeter landscaping is required on the west boundary, and the applicant stated it will be retained and supplemented in order to meet the standard. Refuge collection, the site plan needs to show screening on three sides of the dumpster and enclosure. And with service and off-street loading areas, the site plan needs to show screening of the off-street loading area that they've provided. There's off-street loading berths required in table 2107-6. The site plan does show a loading berth area on sheet C101, which are required for assisted living facilities. The size and dimensions aren't, are not labeled, and this has been placed as a condition of approval. For 2107-110C, the residential design standards, energy efficiency. Menu item has been met. Between 19 and 30% of the window and primary entrance doors on the south, north, and west and east elevations exceed the 10% requirement. Building spacing has been met. There's only one building proposed, and the minimum separation distance exceeds the 30 feet, at 32 feet. Pedestrian access, as stated before, there is a walkway from the primary front entrance to the street shown on the site plan, but it does not show the full connection. However, this will be provided by the applicant. Building and site orientation, the standard's been met. The elevation drawing shows more than 50% windows and entrances on the ground floor. C and D have been met. That's the orientation of living space and windows. They exceed that. Visible front entries, that has been met. The primary entrance door on the south elevation is facing the street. And with number seven, the building articulation menu, those items have been met with D, E, I, and J. There's a porter-cochet canopy for winter protection. There's two or more primary wall siding materials and change of color. And the building elevations are free from garage doors on the north, south, and east elevations. Item eight, staff has found that's been met. There's weather-protected entrance, sheltered passenger loading zone, ice-free walkway, which will have to just be shown on the site plan exactly which shaded, which is heated. And then for the year-round access to sunlight, the petitioner needs to provide a solar access study showing that windows to every dwelling unit will receive sunlight access for at least one hour on December 21st. Condition number nine, the standard's been met. The primary entrance on the south elevation has a vestibule and porter-cochet. Ten, landscaping standard's been met. The mechanical and electrical screening has been met. It's not shown to face the street or residential district, and it's concealed by parapets. For number four, the development pros in the site plan is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. In Anchorage 2020, generalized land use policy number seven, avoid incompatible uses to another, that's been met. Residential policy 12 and housing policy 60, design attractive, affordable housing that is suited to its environs, which this facility will meet. And Anchorage 2020 goal four, to provide a range of places to live, meeting the housing needs of residents of all income levels, household sizes, interests, ages, abilities, and races and ethnicities. With that, planning finds, recommends approval of the site plan subject to conditions 1 through 15 found on pages 13 and 14 of the site packet. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Odell, thank you for that presentation. A question about the department recommendations. On page six of the staff packet, you talked us through item 2107-080, site perimeter landscaping. The last sentence there says there should be a condition of approval requiring the landscape plan to show the required landscaping. I may have missed it, but didn't see it explicitly in the department recommendations. Perhaps it's implicit in item 14. But I just wanted to run that by you and check, see if there might need to be an amendment to that or an addition, or I'm just missing it.
Thank you. So through the chair, Mr. Ron, that's, condition number eight is provide and install L1 visual landscape along the west lot boundary.
I missed it. Thank you.
No, no problem. There's, it's a complex site, definitely.
I just have a quick question for clarification on the, with respect to the pedestrian walkways. I wasn't entirely clear what connection is anticipated with that particular condition of approval. Can you give a little more clarity on that?
Yes, Mr. Gardner. So that's from the Phase 2, and then out to the new road that they're going to build. They show it along the road. And then there's just some confusion there between the Phase 2 around the building, kind of the parking lots, and then where it connects across to the road. I was informed by the applicant, however, it is on there. Staff, traffic department may have just misinterpreted it. So they will be providing it. We're just going to need clarification like shading from them that shows the route, the pedestrian route.
Okay, and is that referring to connecting on the road along the east side of the property there?
Out to Clay, yes.
Out to Clay. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, seeing nothing pending here. If there's a representative from the petitioner? You've got 10 minutes, but if you'd like to reserve any, let us know, and we can help you monitor your time.
Thank you. My name's Laquita Chimalowski. I'm the land use planning manager at Dell. And I'm here tonight representing the Grayling Maple Springs. For some reason, this is not advancing. Oops, there we go. So as the, as staff mentioned, this project's located on fragment lots 1, 2, and 3 of tract A2B, baseball subdivision. It is a continuation of Phase 1, which was completed and is in operation. So this just is a representation of the Phase 1 development, which was, is the assisted living facility, which, as I mentioned, was completed and is in operation. So the site is zoned B3 with special limitations that requires the site plan review. And the zoning to the north and the south is the B3 with special limitations, and then PLI to the west, and I2, which is heavy industrial, and R1 to the east. So this is an overall of the site plan. I think the pedestrian connection that has been mentioned is this, there's sidewalks on either side of the new driveway that come into the site. And then there's a sidewalk connection that goes along the parking area and then crosses to connect with the sidewalk that was part of Phase 1. And we can sort out the details with traffic, so we don't take any exception to the condition. There is a future third phase planned for a medical office building, but it's not part of the site plan review, and that's what you see in the shaded area. And then site, stormwater runoff from the site will drain into onsite catch basins that discharge into a detention pond that's located up at the, just to the south of Phase 1, and that was designed to accommodate all three phases of development. And then this is the landscape plan that you saw in your packet. We are utilizing existing vegetation as well as implementing with additional plantings around the site to meet not only the perimeter landscaping requirements, but the interior parking lot requirements. And then the elevation, so the look and feel will be very similar to the existing assisted living facility as far as materials and colors. And then just an overall floor plan for floors 1 and 2, which will have your skilled nursing, rehabilitation, and hospice care. And then the basement level floor plan. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you. We have a relatively large number of conditions of approval. I'm wondering if the petitioner sees any difficulty in meeting these?
No, I do not.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anything pending. We've got a healthy 7 minutes and 14 seconds for rebuttal, if you'd like it. And we'll go ahead and open up the floor if there's anyone here this evening looking to testify on this case. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, you're welcome to use those 7 minutes for any other comments. No, okay. No rebuttal. I guess with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and look for the commission. What's the will of the body? Commissioner Pulis?
I move in case 2022-0084 to approve a site plan for a nursing facility on an undeveloped tract of land located within baseball subdivision, tract A2B, fragment lot 2, subject to conditions 1 through 15 shown on pages 13 and 14 of the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Pulis. Your motion is seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. I move, I'm going to support this case because it meets the major site plan review approval criteria, as noted by the department. No public opposition or opposition from reviewing agencies, and the conditions of approval will verify remaining items will meet Title 21 criteria in my mind.
Well, that captured anything I was going to add. Thank you, Commissioner Pulis. I don't see any other comments pending. We'll just go ahead and call a vote. Six votes in favor, no opposed. That motion passes. Next item on the agenda is case 2022-0082. Is there a report from staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for a conditional use permit for the development of the municipal navigation center, which is classified as a homeless and transient shelter within Title 21. The site is within a PLI district. This will be a low-barrier shelter, and those, those are individuals in immediate need intended to serve up to 150 clients with additional capacity to serve up to 200, as deemed necessary by the municipal emergency shelter plan. The function of this facility will be unique and will offer a type of service not currently available in Anchorage. Clients will be provided meals, beds, secure storage, laundry, bathrooms, and the opportunity to meet with case managers that will help connect them with available social services and housing opportunities. It is intended that the average stay at this facility will be seven to nine days. However, this length of stay is largely dependent upon the availability of other, more permanent housing options. The site is located southeast of the intersection of Tudor Road and Elmore Road. The proposed use will be located within a developed approximately 25.7 acre parcel that contains the former headquarters of the Anchorage Police Department, which is now being used as an administrative facility by APD. The project area is approximately three acres in size, and the size of the proposed facility is approximately 27,000 square feet, and the building is being manufactured by sprung structures. The planning department has evaluated the application and presents the following findings for the commission's consideration this evening. For approval criteria 1, we do believe the criteria is met. The petition site is classified as community facility or institution per the 2040 Anchorage Land Use Plan, Land Use Plan map. The proposed use is consistent with this classification. This parcel does not have any classification within the Anchorage 2020 Anchorage Bold Comprehensive Plan, but the following goals and policies of applicable comprehensive plans apply. For Anchorage 2040, that would be goal 2 and land use policy 5.6. And the following policies from Anchorage 2020 apply, and that'd be policy 49, 50, and 61. The submitted site plan is compliant with dimensional standards, 2106, and it is also compliant with 2107 through conditions. And those conditions are shown on pages 11 and 12 of the staff packet. They do involve just revisions to the site plan as well as submittal of a revised wetland permit approved by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. For approval criteria 2, we do believe the criteria is met. The petition site is zoned PLI, which is public lands and institutions, which permits homeless and transient shelters subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. The PLI district is intended to provide a sufficient land base for the establishment of public and quasi-public facilities. Homeless and transient shelters are within the community service use category per Anchorage Municipal Code, Title 21, Chapter 5, and as such, the proposed facility is consistent with the purpose of the PLI district. For approval criteria 3, we do believe the criteria is met. The proposed site is compliant with applicable use-specific standards of homeless and transient shelters. For approval criteria 4, we do believe that criteria is met. The petition site is approximately 25.7 acres in size. The topography is generally flat, and the shape of the lot is roughly rectangular. Although the parcel measures 25.7 acres, the project area is only approximately three acres. The overall area of the navigation center itself will be 27,000 square feet, which equates to .62 acres. Although revisions to the submitted site plan will be necessary to resolve conditions of approval, there does appear to be adequate area to accommodate pedestrian facilities, off-street parking, landscaping, as well as vehicular turning and maneuvering without causing excessive site congestion or bulk. For approval criteria 5, we do believe the criteria is met. The surrounding properties are all zoned PLI, district to the east and south, and B3 general business to the north and west. The proposed site and those surrounding it to the west, south, and east were deeded to the municipality through legislative action in the 1970s and are intended to house various government, community, and institutional uses. Because of this, the character of properties on three frontages abutting the subject parcel will remain public service-oriented uses. Adjacent commercial property to the north is separated from the subject parcel by Tudor Road, which is a major arterial. This facility will be located within the same parcel as the former Anchorage Police Department headquarters, which is now being used as an administrative facility for the police department. Various other community and government facilities, such as the Municipality of Anchorage Community Development Center, Anchorage School District Transportation Center, Alaska Department of Public Safety Headquarters, the State Crime Lab, and the Alaska State Medical Examiner's Office are located in proximity. The majority of the proposed facility's operations will take place within the enclosed facility. If developed and operated in a manner consistent with the application, there should be minimal impacts to surrounding properties that would substantially limit, impair, or prevent use of their properties in a lawful manner. For approval criteria 6, we do believe the criteria is met. The subject parcel's size and proposed site design are overall compatible with the scale and site design of neighboring properties. The majority of the surrounding properties and buildings are large parcels that house high occupancy buildings containing office, medical, and vehicular maintenance uses. Increases in vehicular traffic to this site are anticipated to be minimal, as the majority of clients will likely access the facility via transit, shuttle, on foot, or other non-motorized methods. A transportation plan is being developed by the applicant to provide transportation for clients to and from this facility. There is some concern about increased mid-block crossings along Tudor Road due to the alignment of the pedestrian pathway in Tudor Center Drive. There are several active bus stops along Tudor Center Drive, and because of this, it may be appealing for transit users to cross mid-block instead of using the developed pedestrian overpass at the nearby intersection of Elmore Road and Tudor Road. The applicant is encouraged to consider various options to prevent mid-block crossings along Tudor Road. These options could include, but are not limited to, improved wayfinding through signage or site alteration, realigning the pedestrian pathway, or installing a physical barrier. Hours of operation will be 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with dedicated quiet hours between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. The majority of site operations are within the enclosed building, and significant impacts from noise and/or odor are not anticipated because of this. The majority of existing mature vegetation will be retained with the exception of removing the shrub understory in areas adjacent to the navigation center. Removing this vegetation will assist in increasing natural surveillance of the site as well as implement firewise guidelines. For approval criteria number 7, we do believe the criteria is met. It is critical that this facility maintain a safe, secure, healthy, and welcoming environment to its clients to achieve operational success. To maintain such an environment, site security will be a high priority. The navigation center will be located directly next to an active APD facility, and regular patrols by navigation center staff will be conducted at the grounds and surrounding areas to collect trash and deter illegal camping. Additionally, two outdoor recreation areas will be provided for clients. These areas will have outdoor seating and will be supervised. Having an onsite outdoor recreation area will maintain safety and encourage clients to stay within the boundaries of the property. For approval criteria 8, we do believe the criteria is met. The petition site has direct vehicular access to Elmore Road, which is classified as a Class 3 major arterial in the 2014 Official Streets and Highways Plan. Class 3 major arterials see over 20,000 daily vehicle trips, and direct pedestrian access will be provided to existing separated pedestrian facilities along Tudor Road. Pedestrian and non-motorized facilities are also available along Elmore Road, but none are present along the parcel's southern boundary abutting Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. nor is a crosswalk delineated or signalized. Because of this, clients should be directed to use the developed pedestrian facilities along Tudor and Elmore Road and be discouraged from walking along or crossing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue due to safety concerns for pedestrians and vehicles. And the closest fixed route public transportation is available at the intersection of Tudor and Elmore Road via Route 25 within a quarter mile of the petition site. With additional access to Routes 10, 20, and 55 is available within a half a mile, and bike racks will be provided onsite by clients and staff, for clients and staff. For approval criteria number nine, we do believe the criteria is met. The site is located within the Anchorage Roads and Drainage Service Area, the Building Service Area, Police and Fire Service Areas, and Park Service Area. This area includes routinely maintained urban amenities to include developed roadways, non-motorized pedestrian pathways, signalized intersections, as well as electricity, gas, and telecom infrastructure. Public water and sanitary sewer service are available on this parcel. Appropriate service supply and connections will be determined by Anchorage Water and Waste Water Utility at the time of development. Given these findings, the department does recommend approval of the conditional use permit subject to conditions 1 through 9, shown on pages 11 and 12. And additionally, I just wanted to make a note that due to the large size of the staff packet, we provided a condensed version for those available in attendance this evening. This condensed version omits the community meeting materials submitted as part of the application, reviewing agency, and public comments, although I will note that we did not receive any written public comments on this case, as well as it also omits the posting affidavit. And the cover sheet on that condensed staff packet does include the web address for the full staff packet, in case those attendants would like to pull that up. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Yella, thank you for that presentation. I appreciate both the thoroughness and the succinctness of it, anticipating that we'll have some more discussion throughout the rest of the evening here. I'm interested first in the public notice. And I read on page three of the staff packet, and I think you may have talked us through this, that public hearing notices were also sent to the Campbell Park and University Area Community Councils. Yet elsewhere in the staff packet, information provided by both the department and the petitioner's representative, there's discussion around area-wide engagement. Understanding that this has been a well-voiced issue of concern by the community and a lot of opportunities for public comment, can you help me understand why the department elected to only provide notice to those community councils as opposed to a broader announcement?
Sure. Through the chair, Commissioner Ron. So the planning department, we are obligated to abide by code standards when noticing cases. In this case, it would be every community council within 1,000 feet of the petition site, which would be Campbell Park and University Area Community Councils. If we were to depart from those standards, it could be seen as, you know, sort of a favoritism over this case versus any other. So that's why we are obligated to follow what's required of us of code, and that's what we've done in this case.
If I may follow up on that for the record. Obviously, this caught my interest, Mr. Yella, and so I did dig into the code. And item 6C in that section talks about, "Any community council whose boundaries lie beyond the minimum notification distance shall receive notice regarding proposals of potentially major scope or controversy that, in the opinion of the director, are likely to have a significant impact on the residents of those community councils." So I guess I was looking to see if there was consideration at the director level as to how and why the noticing went to certain community councils, but not others.
So through the chair, Commissioner Ron, we did notice the Federation of Community Councils, which oversees all, I believe, 38 community councils within the Municipality of Anchorage. And then the Federation can take it upon themselves to then forward that on.
Thank you, Mr. Yella. That's what I was looking for, and apologies if I missed it as being stated as such in the staff packet. Thank you for answering the question.
Okay, I don't see any other questions pending, so we'll look for a representative. You've got 10 minutes again.
Good evening. My name is Lakuida Chimalowski. I'm the Land Use Planning Manager at DOW, and I'm here tonight representing the Municipality of Anchorage for the MOA Navigation Center. So as staff mentioned, the project site is located at the southeast corner of Tudor and Elmore on the APD campus, just to the east of the administration building. So this is, the Navigation Center is part of a network of facilities that are there to help those that are experiencing homelessness. As you can imagine, there's no one-size-fits-all solution to help people. And so the Navigation Center is actually kind of a proactive approach that provides support services and temporary housing for those that may be experiencing homelessness, but it's really to also capture those folks before they find themselves in that situation. So as staff mentioned, we did have a robust community outreach program as part of the CUP, but we understand it doesn't just stop at the CUP process. And so not only did we have all these meetings that you've seen in your packet to provide opportunities for people to ask questions and get input, but we also had a project webpage, project email, comment sheets, online survey. The municipality is also looking to develop a stakeholder group that would include community council members as well as business owners and other stakeholders in the area to be able to provide input, not only through the remainder of the design, but through operations. So although it's not required because there's a conditional use permit requirement, there was a site selection study completed. So we didn't go through the formal process, but there was a lot of work to get to this site. So there was originally 78 sites that were reviewed that were whittled down to five, that were studied in more detail. And so they looked at things like zoning, adjacent land uses, was the land or the facility readily available? Could it be fenced and secured? And that's really what got us to this site. Some of the things that were favorable for this potential, or this location was that the site is partially developed, so there's some inherent cost savings when it comes to construction. And then the proximity to the Anchorage Police Department being located on their campus. And then the UMed district across Tudor Road, which would also provide additional support to the facility. So it's kind of, it's a unique situation, this particular location. As you can kind of see on this map, it's an oasis to itself. It's bounded by right-of-way on all sides. And so it's not directly adjacent to residential or businesses, which I think is really unique for a property zoned PLI or B3, and would be hard to replicate elsewhere in Anchorage. So a little bit about operations. As I mentioned, the Navigation Center is a facility for folks to come in and get, to meet with navigators or case managers, get evaluated, and either be processed to the next step, whether it's getting, going to a rehabilitation center, or getting vouchers for housing support. Or if they need a place to stay for the short term, there is the shelter component of the facility. So during the community outreach process, we heard quite a few, or had a lot of different questions and concerns, one of them being traffic and how people were going to get here. And as staff mentioned, we are in the process of putting together a transportation plan, which would have a shuttle or bus service to get people to and from the facility. There is the bus stop located on Tudor Road as well. And then they mentioned the hours of operations, so it will be staffed 24 hours per day, seven days a week, and there will be quiet hours. One of the concerns that we heard was, how are we going to reduce camping or address camping in the area as well as fires, potential fires? So that is one of the reasons that we're looking at clearing the underbrush adjacent to the Navigation Center as a fire mitigation, as well as providing clear lines of sight and discouraging camping. There's also been discussion about having a camping restriction in the area. Initially, we were looking at a one-mile radius, but we are working with our neighbors to figure out what that boundary would look like because if we just did a mile, for example, we'd cut right through UAA campus. We don't want to do that. We will continue our partnerships with APD, AFD, and campus police. We've met with UAA campus police to talk to them so that we have this network of safety and security and patrol. And then site access and security. So the site will be fenced. As staff mentioned, there's some discussion about a pedestrian connection to the sidewalk on Tudor Road. We have met with DOT to talk about what that routing and that connection would look like, as well as mitigation measures to route folks to the signalized intersection at Tudor and Elmore and the overpass so that we can avoid folks trying to cross mid-block. So a little bit about the project design. This is just an overall view. As you can see, the uses, the Navigation Center would be separated from the APD uses by a fence. They have their own driveway and parking, as well as that pathway connection to Tudor Road. And then the landscape plan, the site is surrounded by natural vegetation. So as I mentioned, we will be clearing to help with those lines of sight and fire mitigation, but we will be making sure that we meet Title 21 requirements. And then this is just an example of sprung structures that have been used in other locations as navigation centers to give you a sense of what the facility may look like. And then the floor plan, one of the things that we want to do is create a sense of community. Unlike other facilities, folks are encouraged to stay here during the day. They don't need to find somewhere else to spend their time. So there's not only outdoor spaces, as staff mentioned, but there'll be indoor spaces whether you're there for the day to get support services, or you're actually staying there on a temporary basis. So I, you know, we've had a lot of input, and I think you've seen that in your staff packets, and tried to, through design and the operations plan, mitigate those as much as we can. I think that we all can agree there's no perfect location for this facility, but I think this site really lends itself to being successful in the sense of it being near the APD site, near the buses, near the UMed district. And I think that through the mitigation measures we've already implemented with the design and through the operations, we can have a successful navigation center to help our community members in need. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Chair Gardner. I was hoping other commissioners would have jumped in. I waited a few seconds, I promise, before I put my name in the queue, but I'll try and keep it brief. Ms. Chimalowski, thank you for the presentation. My initial interest to you is around engagement. Thank you for talking about the public input that was received in the many meetings. Can you talk more specifically about engaging those who are experiencing homelessness? How has the applicant, how have you and representing the applicant reached out to those most impacted, affected, and hopefully benefited by this proposal?
Yeah, I'm gonna, actually, I have Saxton here and Adam, who could probably answer that question better than I can.
Hello, my name is Saxton Shear, the Director of Maintenance and Operations. I'm the project manager for the Navigation Center project. To the point of your question, Department of Health and Human Services is kind of our direct liaison between us and the end user. They're the one that represents the end users, what we kind of reference as the services that they will benefit from. So the design criteria that we're trying to meet is really based off of, one, the design team professionals that we've, we're kind of leaning on for that expertise, which is McCool, Carlson, and Green for that space. The clientele, early in the conversations, we worked really closely with Meg Zolotell, and we received a lot of directions and comments, shretts that were done with McCool, Carlson, and Green and the Coalition and homelessness. And part of those meetings also, we received directions from the facilitation group that Larry Baker and Meg and Felix Rivera were a part of. So that was a lot of the preliminary criteria that we received in the design requirements for those that benefit from the services. I think the ongoing specifics that we now get are from the Salvation Army and other kind of, you know, feedback that we get right now. But it's, really, it's from Department of Health and Human Services that we get that information.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, before you step away, could you spell your last name for the record, please?
Shear. It's S-H-E-A-R-E-R.
Thank you. Commissioner Winchester.
Yeah, on criteria number eight in your packet, there was talk about a people mover bus stop that's being requested to be reinstated. Do you have any updates on that? And how would you guys feel about if that was a condition of approval added to it, that that bus stop would have to be reinstated?
We're not optimistic, I think. I mean, I was with Transit as their project manager last year prior to my director position, so I'm close with Jamie Acton, and the process for activating a dormant bus stop, right now that's deactivated. So to reactivate a bus stop, it's pretty cumbersome, and there are conversations very preliminary right now. Not hopeful that that will meet the activation of the navigation center at the same time. So I think it's more key that the transportation plan that the Department of Health and Human Services is preparing is going to better meet the needs of those individuals before the public transit stop on Tudor is activated.
Mr. Yella, I see you in the queue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to speak to realigning the bus route. So I certainly don't want to speak for the public transportation department, but as a former employee of the public transportation department and planning tech, I can tell you that realignments to bus routes are very, very cumbersome, and it's probably a six-month process to do so, even a minor realignment. Reason being, schedules have to be changed, have to be deactivated or reactivated. So it can take quite a long time, which certainly could push this project out quite some time. Thank you.
Commissioner Krishna.
Yeah, I'll maybe follow on to that and ask a little bit more broadly. Of course, there's talk of the transportation plan for this facility. I understand that's not before us to view right now. Do you have a timeline for when that's anticipated to be complete? And similarly, I think, in the same vein, I'd like to ask about the, you know, camping ban. What, could you tell us a little bit more about the process for that and the sort of decision-makers that would be involved there?
I think to answer both questions, both, Department of Health is driving both plans. The camping plan or policy that we've referenced when we meet with other key stakeholders, such as UAA, APU, Providence, South Central, ANTHC, everyone's very interested in the zero tolerance for camping, which, again, this is just a, for the basis of this discussion, it's a one-mile radius. That's a hot, hot-button issue with a lot of stakeholders because it's just not that simple to draw a clean line, a one-mile radius. If you do that, you split the UAA campus in half, and you can imagine if you really play with the lines of that, what that would do. So we're having ongoing meetings with them to meet their needs and address and mitigate those concerns. So that's an ongoing discussion. The transportation plan, I don't have an ETA on that or when that'll be finished, but Department of Health is fielding that.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead. I've got, I guess, a general question. I'm not sure who the best person to answer would be, and then if there's no one else pending, I have a specific question. But the general question is just understanding, and I don't know how it necessarily directly ties into any of the criteria for this particular purpose, but what the long-term plan or expectation is for this type of facility and with the tent structure and what its, you know, expected life period is and what the wind down looks like on the backend.
I would reference it as like a membrane structure. It's an R-30, R-value structure. I think that the lifespan on that is 30 years, we anticipate on that. And I don't know the drawdown. We're only, you know, really factoring to meet the needs of those that will benefit from the services, and we're really pushed by the temperatures that we're, you know, cold temperatures that are rapidly approaching. So that's really what's pushing the schedule right now to meet the needs of those that will benefit from the structure.
Okay, thanks. And I guess I'll move on to my just specific question. Is, there are a couple of spots in the application materials that referenced the expectations for how people would be arriving at the facility, and I think somewhere in the application it specifically mentions bike storage. And I didn't see anything that clearly looked like bike storage options in the materials, and more generally, just for storage of personal items. I saw there were some lockers identified, but I was wondering if you could explain in a little more detail what the plan is for storage?
We're actually just approaching the fixtures, furniture, and equipment meeting that really kind of portrays the locker systems that we're proposing. And so we just kind of made some preliminary selections of those features. Again, just for reference, the FFNE is not part of the construction budget. We're really trying to control the costs. So there's a lot of discussions on, you know, funding that, but it is a primary emphasis to, that's what a lot of people value, is securing their items. What's on them is very important to them. So that's a big emphasis.
Yep, outdoors as well.
I guess, just to add to that, there'll be facilities within the navigation center for storage for folks, but, you know, as you can imagine, people show up with a lot of belongings, so there will be outdoor facilities for the storage, additional storage for folks who are actually staying at the facility.
And I could add, the locker system, so the drawings that you'll reference there, the dividing wall between the bathrooms and the sleeping quarters, on that wall is where we're factoring, placing the locker systems, where the individuals would be assigned a locker with either a code or a key designated or assigned to them, so they can secure their items.
Commissioner Paulus.
Just had one quick question. I wanted to verify that the max capacity being proposed right now is 200 clients. Normally 150, but max is expected to be 200. I read a lot of different numbers in the 300 pages, so.
Yeah, that's correct. That's what the Assembly set the limits, yes.
Commissioner Krishna.
A question perhaps for staff on that. Would there be any sort of reason to include capacity as a condition of approval? Could you tell us if that would have an effect, I guess?
Sure. Through the chair, I don't believe it's necessary, given how condition number two on page 11 of the staff report is written. So it says, "All constructions shall substantially conform to the following submitted application narrative and plans on file with the Planning That ties in everything that they're showing in their narrative, that say they go over 200. There could be some ramifications for that. Should the Commission decide to make that a condition of approval, limiting the amount of clients that can be served at any one time, that would be up to the Commission, whether they want to go that route. But I don't believe that it's necessary to tie that in.
Thank you.
And from what I remember, to turn on the surge, it triggers an approval process. And from the Assembly meetings I sat in on, I don't know how to sign that, but I believe, yeah, definitely to turn on the surge, there is an approval process.
And I guess I just have one other question that kind of came to mind as we went through here. The comments from DOT about the concerns about pedestrian crash risk on Tudor Road seem to express a pretty strong concern about that, and they also gave some specific concepts or ideas that they proposed as a way of resolving that. I think, I heard you mention that you have been in discussions with them, and I was just curious what your feelings would be on a condition of approval along the lines of resolving the mid-block or pedestrian concerns raised by DOT.
So I guess to answer the first part of your question, so we have been meeting with DOT, with Scott Thomas and some of the other folks over there, to talk about what measures could be implemented. Some of the things we talked about at our last meeting was the alignment of the connection, you know, getting it closer to the intersection, if there needed to be some channelization, like fencing or other barriers and wayfinding signage to direct people. So they either, if they're coming from that intersection, they come into the navigation center, or if they're leaving, that they get to that, to the Tudor-Elmore intersection and that overpass. And I'll let you answer the, if you see an issue with the condition of approval being added.
Well, DOT confirmed they had no issues with any conditions. I think the big thing was looking at a barrier, a potential barrier along the current access road out to Tudor as one option. Two, they did confirm that operations will mitigate the risk. And what we mean by that is the current facility operations controlling the access out to Tudor from the Navigation Center campus. So either designated times that that's, you know, people are allowed to enter and exit freely during that time. However, that takes shape. They did confirm that operations is a known risk mitigating effort. So both, we had a great meeting last week with them, and 95% drawings will reflect our risk mitigation measures.
So I guess then, just to clarify, you know, the question, because we often will see conditions along the lines of where there's, if there is a concern like that that's raised, that is to just resolve that concern with the relevant agency, whatever that outcome may look like. And it seems like you're maybe most of the way there. So I guess the question again is, if there were a condition that were just to confirm that DOT's concerns be resolved, do you have an issue with that?
I guess I would just make, I would only be concerned in that some of those, as Saxton mentioned, are going to be operation-type things that can be implemented. So I don't think there's any issue with having a condition to resolve that with DOT, as long as it doesn't bleed over into operations, because that goes beyond the CUP.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it looks like we're about out of questions, at least for the moment. Thank you very much for that information and the presentation. We'll go ahead and open it up to the public. If anyone wishes to speak to this case, feel free to come forward. And if you could state your name for the record before you begin, and whether you're speaking as an individual or on behalf of an organization.
Good evening. Tyler Robinson with the University Area Community Council. I'm speaking on behalf of the UACC. Commissioners, staff, thanks for having me here this evening. There are three specific conditions that I'd like to focus on. If you have a question after my testimony about the notice process, I'd be happy to answer it. But numbers five, six, and seven, to me, are the most relevant of this conditional use application, and this use in particular. Those criteria really get to the meat of the matter of how this use will affect or impact the characteristics of the surrounding area, whether or not it's compatible, including how its operating characteristics impact that compatibility. And number seven, any significant impacts associated to result from the use will be mitigated or offset to the maximum extent feasible. When discussing whether these standards are met, the application and staff report, for the most part, take the point of view of the subject property itself. When looking at fire safety, it speaks to reducing brush and clearing around the perimeter of the site. When it looks at pedestrian safety, it considers the safety of the clientele, not the pedestrian experiences of others utilizing what are three to four of the primary recreational trails in Anchorage. Trash, it addresses on-site or immediately surrounding the site. To the extent that the report and application talk about impacts off-site, it expands the potential area of impact, only marginally suggesting patrols in the immediately surrounding area. This body has in the past had regular testimony from property owners around the Brother Francis Shelter in relation to their conditional use permit. Many times, the impacts noted by those citizens are blocks, if not farther away from the shelter, and across major roadways. During hearings related to funding for this project, the Assembly heard from many residents not immediately adjacent to the Sullivan Shelter about impacts, and the increased impact experienced when a decision was made to discontinue private patrols off-site. This was an operational decision that had nothing to do with the design of the facility itself. Our greatest concerns have less to do with the design of the facility, what it's made of, what its landscaping is, but who operates it, and who is taking responsibility for the impacts inside and outside. Since we are going to own this shelter, we need to own all of its impacts. I have several requests or recommendations. One, expand the area of impact. Because we have firsthand experience with shelters in Anchorage, why does the application only look to the most immediate surrounding area for discussion on impacts, or primarily from the point of view of the user? This application should identify a likely area of impact that stretches well beyond the APD campus, but likely includes the tour, Chester Creek, Campbell Creek Trails, APU, University Lake, Tudor Road Corridor and Businesses, UMed, Far North, and neighborhoods stretching along both the south and north sides of Tudor Road. Two, take that expanded area and extrapolate the impacts that we predict to occur to those areas. What have we learned from Sullivan? What have we learned from Brother Francis Shelter? What additional resources and functions are needed to make this situation better? More resources for parks and rec, enhancements for private security operated by nearby institutions, trail patrols, more fire-wise treatment. Impacts to Anchorage's trail system is number three. AEDC has for 10 years touted the Anchorage Trail Network as a major economic development strategy. The trails in this area are not solely used by surrounding residents. They are our major trails used by residents from all over the city, promoted by the visitor industry, and touted as key investments that help attract and retain a vital workforce. Consider a standalone additional trail or PED facility for the user of this facility, or at the very least, expand it to accommodate all users. Is an eight-to-10-foot path sufficient to accommodate the increase in numbers and the differences in how those users use the trail? Four, clarify who at the MOA is ultimately responsible, and where the operations of this facility will live in the bureaucracy from administration to administration. What is under the scope of a third-party contractor of the facility? We've heard very little about how that operator will be scoped. What is left for APD, AFD, Parks and Rec, DHHS? And five, finally, a recommendation for regular accountability and community feedback. Require an annual report and public hearing, perhaps more in the short term, to this body that establishes and tracks impacts and outcomes, both good and bad. Conditions five, six, and seven can only be met through successful operational capacity, scope, and funding. In sum, to find that this use meets the conditions of approval, there must be an ongoing, transparent evaluative process that brings in surrounding residents, institutions, and stakeholders during the operational phase. We need to expand the scope of this project's area of impact. We need to consider the major impacts that we know will exist from our experiences with other like uses. And finally, I really do encourage you to have that regular meeting inserted as a conditional of approval. Thank you.
Very impressively timed testimony. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you. I'm just making an additional disclosure, that Mr. Robinson sits on the Board of Directors for the organization that I work on, work for.
Thank you, Commissioner Krishna. I think that was, I think you mentioned that same factor earlier, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, I think at the start of your testimony, you hinted at having some insight around public notice. I guess I'll ask you, can you share some more information about that?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. And through the chair, I only brought it up because you asked about it. It's typical for community councils to have off during the summer, and I'm not going to sort of take that excuse, but it is also common to receive emails about cases. And I was just looking in the back. I don't recall ever receiving an email for this case to my university or my private email. I suspect that if I were to go to the FCC office, I would likely find the flyer tucked away. And I do know that if you read the letter of the notice requirement, and you really look at what's around here, you're talking about a couple of municipal entities that are going to receive that notice. I don't know that it went beyond that scope.
I guess I'm curious, appreciate the testimony. Thank you for going through those points. I'm wondering if you, and maybe I kind of missed it in there, but getting down to the nub of it, with respect to this case, what, on behalf of the University Area Community Council, you know, what would they, what is their interest in seeing as an outcome for this particular application that's pending before us? I know you mentioned in particular focus on the feedback mechanism, but is the community council interested in seeing some conditions to kind of implement some of those things and have this move forward? Or is your request with respect to, for example, expanding the area of impact for analysis, pointing towards a preference for, you know, delaying the case in some fashion, and doing further research into what that looks like?
Maybe I'll, Mr. Chair, try to answer that in a couple ways, but, you know, first and foremost, if you look through that packet, there was a lot of community feedback from the University Area Community Council. And stretching back from years, and prior to even my involvement on the council, but including a meeting that was held by Dr. John Morris last year, in which the spokesperson for the municipality said, quite frankly, "Well, I wouldn't want a use like this in my backyard either." I mean, that was our initial engagement with this administration. I think, I think there's a lot of reasonable people that believe that we have to do something. What I'm saying related to the scope and delay, and it was very interesting hearing Mr. Chmuelowski talk about, that the operational side of things are not really something that can be considered during a conditional use permit. I mean, that's the crux of it. It's how this thing operates. If you're really only talking about the physical plant, it's a pretty easy case. You're building a structure, has very limited parking demand, requires landscaping, right? I mean, that's an easy thing. But the impacts that we see, and I have sat in your seat and heard it repeatedly from people surrounding other shelters, I've heard it in Anchorage Assembly testimony, that we're talking about things that happen because we've created a place for people to go during the day, and they want to leave during the day as well. And so what happens is, where does our responsibility end? And I can tell you, when the private operator would say, "I only can impact this area that is my property, that my facility sits on," I think the answer is fundamentally different when it's the municipality of Anchorage that owns the facility. I think there, it is incumbent upon the municipality to take ownership of the impacts that we know will happen. And my only point here is, I don't think we did a very good job of even identifying them. Why is there no analysis of the Brother Francis Shelter, of the increased safety calls, and the increased incidents that happen, and interviews with property? And we've heard all that stuff. So why do we just then suddenly say, "Let's just look at this little, this little space, let's look at the immediately adjacent property, and oh, by the way, let's listen to a comment from DOT?" Like, to me, that's really not, that's really just inviting another, what, 30 years in a different part of town, in an area identified as an economic engine, on a major trail system that still we haven't really talked about. We're not, if you had a road that suddenly had a lot more traffic on it, and it was dealing with different types of traffic, or different speeds of traffic than what you have currently, wouldn't you be required to do something about it? It's a very unique situation. Absolutely, it's located away from, there's no resident next door, but there's all of these other factors. So I think to your point, it's up to you all to decide if you have enough to find that it meets the criteria. I felt the application was lacking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Stephen Callaghan. I'm testifying as an individual. I am...
Can you, sorry, I didn't quite catch your last name. If you could say that again and spell it for the record.
Callaghan. S-T-E-V-E-N-C-A-L-L-A-G-H-A-N.
Thank you.
Testifying as an individual. I am on the University Area Community Council. I'm a resident of the University Area. I live right by the Rescue Mission at the corner of Wright Street and Tudor Road. Of course, this is going to get built, no matter what we do. It's my understanding it's going to be... It's my understanding it's going to be a limited use for a number of years as a facility for people, homeless people to sleep in, and it'll be converted to another use after that. The navigation center portion of this facility is going to be permanently open. It's also, you know, cited in an interesting location. Originally, this was going to be used for something else. I believe it was going to be used for evidence storage. Evidence storage was going to be put in, in this space, somewhere near the former APD Somewhere along the line here, the intent got changed. It's now going to be in the navigation center. So, you know, not sure how this happened, whether this was a bit, kind of a bait and switch. You know, I can see why this is being done. Of course, being, living in UMed, I'm against the project. However, the one thing that we've been lacking is an operations plan, and I think that's the crux of the whole thing. If you just built a building, I don't think anyone would care. If you put a brewery in there, I would really like to see a brewery in there, but that's not, obviously not going to be constructed. But this use, the impact, I think is well over a mile. I think we know that because those of us who have lived in UMed for 20 years know that a facility such as the Rescue Mission does have a tremendous impact. Not just in the UMed, Tudor Road, but I see the same people wandering around the Rescue Mission. I see them downtown. You know, they take the same bus that I do sometimes to go downtown. Regarding the bus stops, I don't know what happened, but they eliminated a lot of those bus stops, some of the very ones that we should probably reopen to allow people to come and go from this facility. And that was just done recently in the last realignment of all the bus routes in Anchorage. And once again, I think, you know, we were notified, but some of us really had to pay attention to these meetings and make sure everything was going okay. You know, my biggest concern is really the operations of the facility, and I think a lot of people in UMed would share that view. And then, I know it's outside of the scope of this, you know, planning and zoning, but really continued funding to make sure this is a success. That's basically the two most important things regarding this facility that need to be looked at.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I think we might have a question here, actually. Commissioner Krishna.
I was just going to ask if the petitioner could clarify this gentleman's understanding of the uses over time.
So, through the work with the assembly, I believe that there, well, there's a goal to meet functional zero, so that's where you have folks who are experiencing homelessness and they, we have enough housing options for them to go immediately to housing. So, there is a plan to eventually not need the housing, the temporary housing component of the navigation center, but the navigation piece would be needed from now into the future. And I don't know if Sexton, you want to add anything to that, or Adam?
Hi, Adam Trumbull, Director of Community Development. So, when the assembly passed, I believe the ordinance setting, setting a 250 and putting a 200, I'm sorry, a 200 surge capacity. They also addressed the term functional zero, and I believe it was a resolution that they passed that said that this would no longer be operational once we reach functional zero. And functional zero did not mean that there would no longer be homeless, but that the housing stock would be able to meet the amount of homeless out there. That was the plan. It was never addressed, I believe, as far as what it would become afterwards, but that was the plan. And then, to be addressed later on, what it will function as once we meet functional zero.
Any other members of the community looking to speak to this matter? Okay, seeing no one else coming forward, you've got 2 minutes and 31 seconds for rebuttal.
So, I guess, just to clarify some of the things that have been touched on this evening through the comments of the audience members, you know, the outreach, I agree. It doesn't, it doesn't end at the CUP level. It should continue through operations, and that's why the municipality is committed to having a group that will consist of community council members, stakeholders, and other interested parties to provide them with a forum to give input through design and construction and operations. I know the municipality is working on an RFP for the operations. I think we, they have a lot of lessons learned from a lot of different facilities. I think one of the things we often forget is we point to Brother Francis Shelter and also to the Sullivan, but there are a lot of centers around town that are successful, and we don't know that they're there and that they're operating successfully. And part of that is that they, they don't just look at the immediate area, they're looking at how they can continue to implement practices that make their site successful, or their operation successful. And I think that's what we plan to do here. And I guess I will just clarify, too, as far as it relates to DOT and the conditions of approval, that was my comment, as far as it not being carried over into operations had to do with trying to comply with a condition of approval with DOT on something that would be an operation measure and hold us up from being able to operate the facility. But I think we've shown that we're committed to making this site successful, and it is a, just a component in the network of services that are needed, and really a vital piece right now that we're missing to have that navigation component. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't see any pending. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And look for Commission, what's the will of the body? Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move in case 2022-0082 to approve a conditional use for the municipal navigation center, a homeless and transient shelter within the PLI, Public Lands and Institutions District, subject to conditions one through nine on pages 11 and 12 of the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ron. Your motion is seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Ron, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners. Appreciate all the questions asked by you of staff, of members of the public and the petitioner's representative. Help me better understand where I'm at with this case. Obviously, from a personal perspective and my service on the board, I don't see myself having any cases more important perhaps than this, at least not, not for the time being, given the gravity of the issues that our community is facing and the needs that are there that need to be met. I'll start by saying I don't know if this is the exact right solution, but I do believe that action in a positive direction is definitely needed. And I generally feel that issuing this conditional use is a step in that direction. Did hear some great testimony from members of the public around operational planning and the importance that that has. I agree with those comments. I just don't know how, as a commissioner, I can fit that into what we're doing through Title 21. And for the record, again, I would reiterate the importance of proper management and operational planning to mitigate some of the potential impacts, but would look to other structures existing or to be planned to take care of that for us. With respect to the conditions themselves, I do agree with staff on their findings. With respect to condition number three, Chair Gardner, you asked a question around bicycle storage, and I was a bit hung up on that as well. What I see is the petitioner proposing bike racks, and to me, that's, that's not quite secure bike storage. And if I strictly interpret that component, it's secure storage for belongings and bikes. So, I would seek a little more firm language or commitment that we're providing the same opportunity for bicycle storage for this facility that we've looked to do for other developments in our community. But at the very least, I would agree that the standard is partially, if not substantially, met. But again, I agree with the department's recommendations, one through nine, and their advisory comments as well. With that, I'll stop talking, look forward to input from other commissioners, and may jump back in here in a bit. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ron. Commissioner Winchester.
Yeah, I'm prepared to support the package in front of us. The applicant said that the navigation center is a proactive site, but this whole site selection and process seemed more reactive than proactive. I know we're facing a time crunch and winter's coming. I'm most concerned about the larger impacts to the area that Mr. Robinson brought up. I'm a big user of Far North Bicentennial, the tour trail. There's huge impacts in there currently. In those woods, there's, there's a lot of trees that are cut down. There's, you know, half-pit houses that are dug all along the riverbank there and see substantial impacts from homeless. I think the UMed area, I'm also a UMed resident, does a lot of the heavy lifting with the Anchorage Gospel. There's a new food pantry at the church on the corner of McGinnis and Tudor now that's probably going to add to those in need. But at the end of the day, it's those in need that we need to serve. So my biggest concern was the pedestrian crossing at Tudor Road. I drive down Tudor Road a lot. There's a lot of pedestrians that cross the Gospel Mission currently. It's probably the highest pedestrian accident rate in the whole city, I would guess, somewhere in that area along Tudor. So, I think this is just going to make it worse. I don't see it really being addressed by this, but I'm hopeful that with operation planning and we can kind of get to where that's not as dangerous as it appears like it's going to be. So, I'm willing to hold my nose and vote for what's in front of us.
Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you. I think I have a couple of comments which may lead us to some, perhaps, amendments. The first is, I think another commissioner brought up the idea of resolving the DOT comments. I would support including that as a condition of approval. I would also very much support including that internal connections to major streets and connections both within the site and off the site, to major connectors are cleared year-round of snow. I think if we know anything from the past experiences that we've had citywide, it's one thing to create those connections, another one to make them usable year-round. This is going to be a high pedestrian traffic site. There's no way around that. I think that setting us up to provide high-quality pedestrian connections at this point is very important. The other comment I would like to make is that, I think one thing the commission, if I may speak broadly, is aware of, is that right now, we are looking at a conditional use for a site that is going to be a major new use. And I truly say, not just for this one-mile radius, but for Anchorage, right, in terms of the services being provided. It's quite hard to look at this and have basically, you know, one chance, I think, for this commission to get it right. I would encourage us to find some way to evaluate success in terms of the conditional use process. I would be open to ideas for how this commission can look at how this application and the site is functioning after it is operational. I think it's very important that we be able to do that so that we're not hearing feedback for years to come without any, you know, way to take that into account for future applications or for this site. Thank you.
Thank you, fellow commissioners, for your comments, and I'll just make it known that I would be welcome to hearing an amendment put forward, or two perhaps, by a commissioner or others to formalize improving what we see.
Maybe a question for staff, referencing the DOT letter, I think it was July 6th, and then, if you look near the end of it, there's a couple bullet points. And one of their bullet points said if mid-block pedestrian safety is not addressed, a DOT PF may be forced to revoke and block all mid-block access permits to Tudor Road right-of-way, including the APD emergency driveway and a new pathway to the navigation center. So, can you just talk about that and what effect that would have on the APD emergency driveway if they revoke that right-of-way access?
Through the chair, that's a difficult question for me to answer, given that that is DOT right-of-way. I've just, we have no jurisdiction over that, so, but certainly limiting and taking away emergency access for Anchorage Police Department would, could impede their operations. And perhaps the applicant might be able to speak to that a little better than I could.
So, I can provide a little bit more input. In our last meeting with DOT, that was one of the topics of conversation. So, that access point is really used as an emergency access for APD as well as for fire access. So, the preference would be not to lose it, especially from a fire access standpoint. We couldn't lose it from that perspective, but it could be gated. So, those are going to be ongoing discussions with DOT as we navigate the best solution for that pedestrian connection. But we'd like to be able to continue to coordinate that with APD and DOT.
I guess I'll take advantage of the opportunity to turn what I think was one of Commissioner Krishna's comments into a question for staff with respect to, any idea, historical, kind of practice or precedent with, for, you know, providing future input or an accountability process as it relates to a COP and conditions that are in place?
Through the chair, there are cases where, like, annual reports could be submitted to the planning department and transmitted to Planning and Zoning Commission for review. The one thing, if the commission would like to add that as a condition of approval, that would help gauge success, is what criteria and factors would you like to see? Would that, and what is your measure of success? Is that number of clients served? Is that clients transferred into more permanent housing? Is that, say, complaints received from neighboring properties and whether or not that's increasing, declining? Exactly sort of what criteria you'd like to see? And then, as far as the frequency that you'd like to see that, whether that be annually, semi-annually, whether you'd like to review that through a public hearing or through a non-public hearing. When it comes to, you know, dates of when that is submitted to the planning department, my recommendation would probably be submit it to the planning department October 1st. That way, it goes before the commission in January of each year. But certainly, I can, I can help the commission kind of walk through the wording on that, but that would be my question that I would pose sort of back to the commission, is what is the criteria that you would like to see and information provided to you at a future date?
Thank you. I appreciate that helpful information. And then, I guess, just as a follow-up question is, what does it, what does it look like on the back end, then? Is it strictly informational, or if it is something that's opened up to a public hearing, for example? Or if it is something that's opened up to a public hearing, for example, what are the options for what might come from that?
It would, through the chair, it would depend if it was a non-public hearing and the commission were to determine that the facility is no longer operating under its original approval, that would call into question whether or not the CUP would expire. If it were to be a public hearing, and you would also solicit additional public comments on that, you could factor that into your decision as well. But again, it would be the commission's decision as to whether or not to make that a public hearing or a non-public hearing. You know, perhaps you could do a non-public hearing annually and a public hearing every five years.
Okay, I think that answers my question. So it goes to the continuing validity of the CUP itself. Ultimately, we would still retain that authority?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Krishna.
Sure, I'll kick us off and make a motion to amend. And I will propose an annual report to this commission, a public hearing annually for the first three years following this, if this item were to pass. And I suppose I will reserve the right. I imagine there's, the commission can make a decision past that point as to the frequency at which they'd like to see a public hearing and report. Thank you.
So I guess for the benefit of myself and the rest of the commission, Commissioner Krishna, thank you for taking a stab at that motion. The concept that I hear in the motion is to require an annual report for the first three years, and then we would have a public hearing on that report.
That's correct. I'm also open, why don't I just propose, let me withdraw this and try it again?
So...
I will just try, I will just make a motion to, for an annual report and a public hearing annually.
Okay, that's a motion for an annual report and a public hearing. I think, Commissioner, or sorry, Mr. Yella, I see you in the queue. I appreciate your input here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. It would just be the preference of the department if the commission could do a date certain rather than, you know, sort of every, annually for the next three years, because that could give a whole 365 days as to which that annual report could be submitted. So to have it at the same time every year would really help. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think we're still working through the motions. Commissioner Krishna, you can feel free to add a proposed date.
On October 1st.
Okay, so the motion is to require an annual report submitted on October 1st and an associated public hearing. I think we heard a recommendation, and just this is just kind of my comment from staff with respect to criteria that should be included in the report. I don't think that ruling on this motion now would preclude us from amending to kind of add those criteria as part of that later on, or that could be included with this motion. But the motion at the moment is to require an annual report submitted on October 1st, 2023, for the first year with a public hearing. Move by Commissioner Krishna. And I've got Ms. Gettig here in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That would be me. We're just having an issue here with the request to speak button. But one more thing is, it would be helpful if the commission could clarify exactly what the purpose of submitting the annual report is, if that's to reevaluate the conditional use approval criteria each time this goes before them to state that it's still in compliance, still meets the approval criteria of the conditional use permit. That way, you know, if the commission, at some point in the future, there were to be some substantial ramifications or it was out of major compliance with the original approval, then the commission would then have the power to revoke the conditional use permit.
Okay, so Commissioner Krishna, your motion is still pending, as an annual report in October 2023, beginning October 1st, 2023 with a public hearing. I don't yet see a second to the motion. Yeah. So at this point, you're welcome to make any modifications if you'd like, Commissioner Krishna. Okay. Commissioner Ron.
So Commissioner Krishna, I would be interested in seeing a compliance report on an annual basis, giving the commission an opportunity to, as staff suggested, test the continued validity of their operations against our original approval criteria. So that's one component. The other objective that I would like to see is a general update on public engagement and input received. So if there are complaints or violations or issues with the operation of the facility, I would like to have that included in the annual report and become part of discussion during the public hearing as well. Not sure if that helps with the need to define what we're after.
So we're still looking for a second on the motion at the moment, or Commissioner Krishna, if you had any changes you're interested in making? Oh, I see Mr. Yella again in the queue.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to suggest, if the commission is amenable to it, we could break, and we could potentially write up an amendment for you that could maybe capture all of the commission's concerns this evening and then bring that back to the commission.
So I guess we don't see a second yet to the pending motion. I think that motion isn't seconded, and I think we're probably due for a break at this point anyway. Apologies, commissioners, I promised myself I would call one earlier than 8:10, and lo, I failed to do so. So we'll take you up on that opportunity, and we'll take a, I guess, a 10-minute break? Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue. Commissioner Krishna.
Yes, I'll restate my motion. It's a motion to amend to add Condition 10 to submit for review by the Planning and Zoning Commission through a public hearing, an annual report of the facility's operations to include number of clients served, log of police calls, and clients placed into permanent housing. This report shall be submitted to the planning department no later than October 1st of each year. If this report is deemed out of compliance with the original conditions of approval, the commission may amend or revoke the original, the conditional use permit approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Krishna, for your motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Krishna, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. I intend to support my motion. I think that having an ongoing way for the public and the commission to evaluate success is important. I would also be open to amendments, to my amendment, to revise or add items that the commission would like to see in that annual report.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Commissioner Krishna, and all those involved in the language contained. I think it speaks to the intent and objectives that I've heard discussed thus far and am okay with the language and intend to support as well. But if there's further improvements to be made, so be it.
I think I'll just note for myself, I think I support this motion to amend. Looking back to the underlying approval criteria for the CUP, I think I agree with some of the comments we heard earlier this evening about, particularly with respect to approval criteria is number five, six, and seven, about the relevant scope of the potential adverse effects extending beyond just the immediately surrounding properties. It's hard to fully evaluate that without having a sense of the operations and how it plays out. We haven't had a lot of information about that, which makes it challenging to evaluate those particular criteria. I think this report will help alleviate that limitation of where we are at the moment, and also given the particular need in the city at this time to have some sort of facility like this. I will also just comment that my read and understanding of this language is that the annual report is of the facility's operations to include the client served, log of police calls, and clients placed into permanent housing. It's not limited to those particular items that the report speaks generally to the facility's operations. Okay, seeing nobody else in the queue, we'll go ahead and call a vote. Six votes in favor that motion passes. That brings us back to the main motion as amended. And I guess before we, I'll go ahead and make just a quick comment on the main motion as well. I spoke to my concerns about the approval criteria with respect to the amendment. I think those concerns are alleviated. I did just want to comment briefly that the application, as submitted on page 35 of the staff packet, does indicate that there will be secure storage for both personal belongings and bicycles for onsite guests, and that my read of approval criteria number two, requiring construction to conform to the submitted application, includes a requirement that there be secure storage for bikes. Okay, seeing nothing further, we'll go ahead and call the vote on this as well. Six votes in favor, that motion passes as well. Okay, that's the end of our agenda. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us here. We'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Polis, seconded by Commissioner Eber. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.